Okay, hi everyone, welcome to this October 13th zoning board of appeals meeting. Oh, still getting people in here. If you could both mute and put your turn your camera off if you're not speaking, that would be great. We are going to call on people when public comment is open, so please don't try to talk until we open public comment. Or if you're the applicant, you're speaking and once we call on you, then you can go ahead and unmute yourself. We have bunch of hearings, not so many, but I think that we're going to try to get through this as quickly as possible. So one thing I would ask is, if you hear a comment that's already been said by someone else, just know that we're pretty smart people and we can, we don't, we don't need to hear it 20 times if we've heard it once. So just try to be respectful of our time and your time and, you know, just try not to repeat each other. And I think that's it. So let's get started with 7:00 PM Lynn Wilson. Lynn, are you here? Oh, hi.
Here, how are you?
Good.
Good evening.
Good evening. So you want to give us a quick update?
Yeah, so as per asked, I attempted to get the original number of butters from the original. Well, yeah, the original list that came and there was a few in there that were just not easily accomplished. And then a couple of weeks back, I reached out to Haley and asked some advice and going forward, which she forwarded to Elizabeth and at that point, Elizabeth got right back to me and gave me the four that were really besides the town that were continue true with butters and I had those since July. So I believe all of the signatures and everything on required on for that is provided to you and I dropped that off yesterday. So can I answer any other questions or?
Yeah, no, that's great. I saw that that had been uploaded with all the signatures, including the town land had been approved. Let me turn to the board. Are there any questions on this? In my mind, we were just waiting for the formality of the signatures. So.
Correct. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Anyone else or?
I mean, the bylaw says all the signatures. Did we get 145 Lexington Road?
So the bylaw is very specific. It's property signatures are required from property owners within 300 feet of the stable, not 300 feet of the property.
Got it. Okay.
So that's when 45 Lexington Road did sign the page.
So these, these are the five property owners that are required. The applicant already had 181 and 201 already had the Concord Museum, already had 68 Cambridge Turnpike. And then I received an email which will be part of the public file. 24A is Natural Resources Division and the Natural Resources Director has agreed to the project. And this is the police fire station and the town manager is actually the one that authorizes that. So I did receive an email from her as well. Additionally, when I reached out to the applicant, the current proposal is for one miniature horse. Both the town manager and the director also did not have any issues if there were two miniature horses. So if the applicant wants to come back later and amend the permit, that's not, that's not an issue as well.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding the the page of signatures. I'm all set.
Okay, great. I'm going to go ahead and open for public comment. If anyone has a comment, please press the raise hand button. Okay, I don't see any. So I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Like I said earlier, I think we were just waiting for this. I had no issues with the application otherwise. So I appreciate you plugging along and getting the signatures all lined up. So unless there's other conversation, I'd be ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to issue a special permit on sections 5, 3, 4, and 11, 6 of the zoning bylaw for the stapling of horses in a residential district at 28 Cambridge Turnpike parcel 0241.
Have a second?
Second.
You know what I realized? We didn't do roll call vote. Let's do that real fast. Kindermans.
I'm present.
Mr. Faya.
I'm here.
Mr. Swaim. Oh, you're on mute, Mr. Swaim.
Here.
Great. And Ms. Aker's more, I'm here as well. All right. I apologize. Back to the second. We got a second from Robbie.
Yep, second.
All right, all in favor, Mr. Faya.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
I.
Ms. Aker's more, I. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Much. Okay, thank you.
All right, we are at 7:06. So I'm going to go ahead and move along with the Corey North Road application. I know this has had a lot of attention. So this is how I see this going. This is the first time this board is being presented with this information. So I anticipate that we will hear the presentation, take public comment, continue this hearing. My guess is we're going to do a site visit. So I would not anticipate a vote tonight and just to set some expectations of where we are headed for the evening.
And on that note as well, I would like to recuse myself from this project.
Okay.
Sign off for now.
Sounds good. We'll see you later. So with all of that, who is presenting for Corey North?
Chris Clausen, 2134 Seville Way, Maples, Florida. I'm with Corey North Road LLC, the applicant. And with me tonight is my attorney, Bill Hinchey. And my Matt Lightman. So I have anticipated that you'd want to be brought up the feed on this PRD application. So I prepared a PowerPoint which I'd like to share with you.
Chris, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I have a question on the, on the board, if you don't mind, with the recusal of the board member earlier. Two questions. How many members are sitting? Because that affects the quantum of the vote. And do you have any alternates that you wish to sit on this application before we get started?
So tonight, there are three of us who are sitting. We have a fourth member who is not here tonight. My guess, and Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we are going to have him do an evidentiary. The affidavit that says that he's watched the hearing, which he will do when this is over and be back with us the next hearing. As you know, it's three votes are needed and it's has to be all three voting for. Does that answer everything?
It does. Just, I don't know your board's practice. Are there alternate members of your board that would sit on this so that we had a full board? Or are you going to go with the three that are present and the one who would watch the video and file the affidavit?
So our full board is three full members and two alternates. Two of our alternates are here tonight and one full member has recused himself and one, like I mentioned, will be back at the next meeting. So this is basically all you got.
That's fine. I guess my question then is really precise. Does the board intend to have an alternate sit as a voting member? So that in the end, you have five voting members.
We will have, you know, it all depends on who is available at the next meeting. So we will at least have three voting members at every meeting. Elizabeth, we will, I don't know what Jim's schedule is or everyone else's schedule. My guess is that there will be four of us with Mr. Kindermans recusing himself at the next meeting, but I don't know everyone else's schedule.
Right. So in the end, there will be at least one associate member voting. And that generally goes by term. So Mr. Faya is the longest serving alternate member and would be the voting member.
Okay.
Our other full members not here, then that would be Mr. Swaim would also be voting.
Okay, very well. Thank you for that. I didn't mean to interrupt or busy night. So now I'll, I'll be quiet. Let Mr. Clausen do his thing. Thank you very.
No problem. Okay.
Okay, okay. I'll share my screen and start the PowerPoint. So okay, so this is a PRD application for a special permit that actually the, we had met with Tom Planning and Natural Resources very early on in this process. And it was recommended that we come in with a PRD. That's why we're in front of you. The property that encompasses the PRD is 16 acres. It was a gravel mine for many, many years. The property was owned by the town of Sudbury. We purchased it from them as when we received the land, it's a, for where will be the limit of work where we're working with then is a gravel mine. So it's a barren piece of land. We're going to be revegetating this property with hundreds of trees and shrubs. It's actually encompasses about 43% of the overall PRD that will be revegetating. And this, this plant count that I have on this third bullet is a little bit larger than what was in front of the planning board two nights ago, because NRC had asked us to add a few more trees. So we've done that. Throughout the design from the civil through the homes, we've attempted to do as much sustainable, incorporate as many much sustainable designs into the plans. Including using CMLP electric for all of our homes. We're going to be bringing that into the community. We have low impact designs for our stormwater system. All homes will be solar ready, EV charging stations, Energy Star appliances. And something that we committed to on Tuesday night was to allow these six homeowners to participate in our transportation demand management program that we have installed in our Sudbury portion of this, this tract of land. So that, that was a planning board really liked that. And it's a, it's a nice program. When we purchased this property from the town of Sudbury, they, they put a limitation on it, a deed restriction on the land and limited us to six homes. That limitation has actually been difficult to work with when working with the PRD regs and trying to create as much diversity and we just don't have the unit count. There was a a number of questions raised on that and we addressed that with the planning board. The other, another highlight of this plan, PRD regs call for 35% of the property to be put aside into open space. This plan actually is going to be 57% of the land will be going into open space under a conservation restriction at the direction of the NRC. And we did receive a positive recommendation from the planning board on Tuesday night. We're doing a limited amount of work within the buffer zone. So we're in front of the NRC right now for NOI. That we had a hearing with them last night. There was a handful of minor requests that we will incorporate and we're in front of that board on November 2nd. That's a quick executive summary and I was going to get into some details for you. This is a locust to give you an idea where 48Y Pittsburgh Turnpike is. This is Pittsburgh Turnpike here. This black line is the town line. Concord's here, Sudbury's here. You can see where the mining operation took place. 48Y Pittsburgh Turnpike is this property here. White Pond is up here. So that gives you kind of an idea where, where the property is. This drawing is a survey is a the existing conditions. And let me zoom in here for, for you to see kind of what's going on. Again, just for reference, this dash line here is the town line. And you'll, these are wetlands back in here. There's some steep grades going down to the wetlands. The mining operation has many low spots, many high spots and ridges. It's not a uniform just bowl. There's lots of things going on from the topography. And in our land plan, we've had to, I'll explain that when we get a little bit further into it, there was some significant grading that needs to be done because of the mining operation. The work that we're doing is predominantly in the areas that have been mined. This drawing is just to show you how the PRD lays out. We have all of the PRD will be part of a condominium, greater condominium structure. We've created exclusive use areas for each one of the home sites. This home site A is for duplex. Home sites B, C, D, and E are home sites for single family homes. The single family homes are approximately an acre each and the duplex site is approximately two acres. This hatched area here is the open space part of the community. And actually, we've extended that to come behind these lots here. It's not showing up on this drawing, but in the CR, it actually extends 25 feet off of this line into the backyards of these homes. At the request of the NRC. Okay, our, I just want to give you a quick overview of our stormwater management system. It's designed to meet all the Massachusetts stormwater regs as well as the town zoning bylaws. Our design and stormwater report has been peer reviewed by the Concord Town Engineer. And they did provide us some feedback and we made adjustments as part of the planning board review process. This drawing is a grading and drainage plan. I just wanted to highlight some of the stormwater management features to, just to bring you up to speed. Over in this area here, there is a, we're creating a bio retention basin, which will direct water from the upper edges of the limit of the mining operation into this bio retention area. The water, stormwater from in this area is all collected and brought into a water quality unit and then deposited into this storage and infiltration feature. So there's a, again, that has all been peer reviewed by the town engineer and, and has been accepted. I wanted to touch on grades for you just to, if I'm going too fast, stop me. I'm trying to, I tried to, trying to go fast. Cause I don't want to take.
We'll, we'll circle back with questions if we have them. This is great.
Okay, great. I'm not usually, I don't usually talk this fast. So, so anyways, I just want to touch on grades. You know, this was a mine. So there's a lot of things going on in this property. It's, it's stripped basically free of trees. You'll, you'll see that when you do a site visit. There's a lot, many low areas. There's some like gnolls that remained and it's all, it's random. We're going to need to fill the low spots and regrade some of the high spots to, to make this, this work. We were conscious of the elevation, the foundation elevations for the conquered homes in relationship to the homes on the other side of the town line in Sudbury and they're almost at the same elevation. All of the homes that we're building will be 35 feet in height from foundation to the peak or less. I bring that up because there's a provision in the zoning bylaw. So this section 6.2.11, which we've asked for a waiver on as part of this PRD. And it's how the building height is calculated. And there's a, this provision takes the measurement from the grade. And then you can go up 35 feet from that. Because of the mining operation, we're having to fill in areas. So we we wouldn't meet that, that, that section of the bylaw. And I have some examples of some cross sections that I could show you and how that applies and and we can address any questions that you may have on that. The important part is we're not building homes that are taller than 6, 35 feet. It's this table here is identifies from the duplexes on the far west of the property and our last home is on the far eastern side. It's, the grades drops from west to east. And it mirrors almost identically with the Sudbury homes that are on the opposite side of the town line. I don't expect you to look at this. This is a document that's been transmitted to the planning board and to NRC. It identifies the found to survey locating the elevations of each of the corners of the, the building pads as well as the, the homes in the town of Sudbury. There was a question that was raised in the planning board process where someone was, wanted to make sure that one side or the other was not towering, the homes weren't towering over the other ones. So we went through that with them. I wanted to jump into landscaping and tree lines. Again, I mentioned that this property is basically stripped of, of trees. We were very conscious with our landscape design on the plant palette. And, and we did work with NRC and the planning board through that process. In the end, what's going to happen is we're creating new habitat for small mammals, birds and pollinators where today there really isn't anything. So we feel that that process of working with NRC and the planning board was a real positive process and it's going to, it's really going to turn, turn out nice. NRC has some provisions for any trees that might be removed as part of the grading process or mitigation on a one for one ratio. We've addressed that with them. And any trees beyond the limit of work, we're not touching at all. There's, there were some questions related to that. NRC did do a site visit, inspected that and confirmed that we're, we're not doing any of that. We're not touching any of the trees beyond the limit of work. I did have a surveyor go out onsite and survey the tree heights. We use that information to create some cross sections to illustrate where the homes will be sited and the, the screening that will be natural screening that is in place from the existing trees beyond the limit of work. So, and this is a drawing of our landscape plan. It's, I think the important parts to this is there's, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of plant material that we're planting in here. We work with NRC on the, on this hydro seed mix that would go into the basin. We worked into the, with them on the hydro seed mix that would go into the buffer zone. We, the plant palettes are all native in nature and they provide berries and other fruit materials for different types of animals. It was, it was a really collaborative effort. This here is a cross section and this line here is the cross section that you'll see coming from south to north and through the duplex. And these trees, as I mentioned, we had surveyed to show the heights of them. There's, there were some questions about, will you see these homes if you're out on the hiking trails back in White Pond hiking trails? And there was some concerns that we were removing these trees. NRC did on their site visit. Check that out and, and confirm that we're not touching any of those. That's this cross section. I have two other cross sections to give you an example. So this is through the first single family home. Again, you can see that the, the tree height relative to the homes and the last cross section on the last building here. Again, screening is significant.
Chris, do you want to, if you want to back up to those cross sections, do you want to point out for the board where the, the existing grades on those cross sections to assist them in understanding that, that height issue?
That's a good point, Bill. So this dash line is the existing grade. And you can see that we'll be filling, I don't even zoom here on this. We're filling here on this area about eight feet, maybe a little bit more than that. 10 feet, Matt? Okay, 10 feet in this area. That's on this last house. This, this house here, I'll zoom in. This is more like 15 feet we're filling in from the existing grade. And then the first cross section. We're actually cutting some in that area. The, the topography is all over the place and you'll, you'll see it when you do your site visit. But these, this is important relative to that waiver that we've requested for the, how height is calculated because of this, the filling here. The way the bylaw is written, we're supposed to measure from this dash line when we would exceed 35 feet if you did that.
And Chris, if I might, Madam Chair, through you, any number of public comments that we've seen expressed concern that these homes would be towering over this ridge line and would be sort of dominating the landscape and plainly visible from the land to the north. And as you can see from the proposed and existing grades, that's simply a misreading of the plan. And I'm sure we'll have more discussion about that later, but I wanted to make that point while Chris Clausen was, was here. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, while we're on that, does anyone have any elevation since we're now looking at these grading? Does anyone want to bring up anything while we're looking at this? All right, we will wait. I mean, Tom, did you have something? Well, Tom, you're muted.
I have a series of questions. Why don't I wait till Chris is done?
Yeah, yeah. So I just meant while we have this up, if there's a question about while we are looking at this profile, but we can bring it back up later too.
Well, on that, on that profile, Chris, if I were in the wetlands or at White Pond.
Yes, sir.
Would I see any of the homes?
No, sir, you will not. The, you will not. No.
Okay. And when you referred to the earlier, one of your earlier bullet points about adding a number of trees, vegetation, et cetera. Are they added in respect of the location of these homes or more in connection with the ridge? Or am I not asking the correct question?
No, there's, there's trees, there, we're planning, I can go back to that slide. So we're adding trees all along the ridge and this area, there's groups of trees and throughout here, all these areas here. Then we have trees down here by the homes and on this roadway here, but they're, they're.
And today, and today, what is on the ridge to the left?
There are, there's, there are trees in this area here and we are removing 34 trees from within the buffer zone. And we are replanting 34 trees, a one for one replacement of those.
Thank you.
Okay, let me keep going. Now I have a whole series of floor plans and elevations for the home, home design. We have one duplex, one side of the duplex, it'll be a four bedroom with a two car garage. The other side of the duplex will be a three bedroom with a two car garage and it will have a loft. The, we have four single family homes, but I have a number of different floor plans that could go on each one of those home sites. All of the duplexes and the single family homes have been designed with, they're all electric, no gas. CMLP will be providing the electricity. They're all solar ready. We're putting an EV charging station in each home. Energy Star appliances. And then we use some of these buildings, design with, with the design type efficiency AC and so. This is an elevation of duplex. So this has a front loading garage here. On the other side, it's a side loading garage. This is the first floor. Which is basically as the garage and your living space. This is kind of like an office. That is the same on both, the four bedroom and the three bedroom duplex. The upstairs is what changes. And basically the difference is we take this fourth bedroom, remove the walls, remove the tiles, remove the door and create a loft. So it's, it'll be deed restricted as a three bedroom. This will have a fourth bedroom. These are the, the, I'm going to go fast through these. They're all colonial styles, single family homes. At those two alternate elevations for this plan. Basically, the second floor is where the bedrooms are. The first floor is where the living, living space is and they all have three car garages. Another one of our floor plans, alternate elevation. I mean, and they're, they're all very similar in terms of layouts with the bedrooms upstairs, living space on the first floor with attached garage. Another colonial, same, same second floor, bedrooms, living upstairs, living space on the first floor. Last floor elevation and similar layout. I put a slide in here to show you what the, what we're building in Sudbury. These are affordable apartments that we built for, under chapter forty R. This is a condominium, age restricted condominium building. And we have a townhomes that are age restricted. They're a little fatter because the master bedroom is on the first floor. And this is a non-age restricted townhome. So we have the masters up on that design. But you want to see what those homes look like. There was a question raised as to wastewater. We spent some time on that with the planning board. And I just thought it would be good for you to understand what we've done. All of our, all of our homes will have title five septic. We already done witnessed soil tests with the Concord Board of Health. They're all located out of Concord Wells, Zone Two area. We will show you, I have some slides, I'll show you that the water does flow away from the Concord well, doesn't go towards White Pond at all. During the process of our permitting in Sudbury, we have a, we have a private wastewater treatment facility. I looked at adding these homes to that facility, but the DEP, we're at the limit for DEP regs on the size of the plant that we have. So adding that extra flow to this plant, we just could not do. During that process of permitting with DEP that plant, we involved Mr. Catcart from the town Concord. Day one, he actually reviewed all that hydro geological studies that were done, had comments on that. We incorporated any comments that he had as well as with the town, Sudbury Water District and their hydro geological engineer. That was a transparent and collaborative effort and, and everyone was satisfied. This is just to show you kind of where the Zone Two is for the White Pond well. So the reference point, this is the White Pond well here. Here's White Pond. This is the forty-eight Y Pittsburgh Turnpike parcel. The orange line is the Zone Two delineation. And all of our septic and homes are outside of the Zone Two for Concord White Pond well. This is an interesting, we, we provided to the planning board our hydro geological model, groundwater modeling. And that's part of the record with the planning board. But I just wanted to show this to you. This is a study that was done for the town of Concord by your, and Natural Resources Office. And this exhibit here, I'll zoom in on it. Illustrates what's going on with groundwater. So you can see the arrows, how the groundwater flows into White Pond. We're, we're over here. Right, right about here. And so there's no groundwater coming into White Pond from this area. And actually the water, the water flows away from White Pond from where we're at. And this is a study again that was done for the town of Concord and it's on. And this is my last slide and I can open it up to questions. I just thought this would be a kind of a neat image. The yellow line is the boundary of forty-eight Y. We ghosted in the, the homes that were, were proposed to build. You can see that how they're located in relationship to the mining. It's also, you can see how the relationship is to the wetlands here. All again, most, all of this land and almost all of this land is going into a conservation restriction. Our homes are set far off of that. And, and again, this, this, all these trees on here and here remain. That's the end of my presentation. I'm sorry I went so fast, but I was conscious of your time. And if you have questions, I'd, I'd like to answer them or have Bill or, or Matt answer them.
No, thank you. I think that's, was a very good introduction to all of this. Of course, we've all reviewed the information, so none of it is a surprise. But yeah, let's go ahead and for people raising their hands in the public, we're going to actually not get to public comment yet. We're going to go ahead and talk amongst the board members. Who, Tom, Robbie, anyone want to, want to start?
Yeah, I have several questions if I may. Chris, it's Tom Swain. One, on the retention basin, is there provision made for water to flow out of that? And or what direction will the water flow from the retention basin?
That's a very good question that, and I think Matt Leidner, our civil engineer can answer that. He, he worked with the Concord Town Engineer on that point. And Matt, could you address that for Mr. Swain?
Yes. Good evening, board members. Matt Leidner, Civil Design Group, Twenty-One High Street, North Andover, Massachusetts. Chris, if you could go back to the grading plan, it was one of the earlier slides, I could probably explain this better with that up. So that's a great question. The, so as Chris had mentioned in the presentation, there's actually two stormwater management systems that handle the water from the, the proposed developed portion of this site. The one in the back of the homes, which is right there up high on the page, that's the above ground basin, is a bio retention basin. And it takes essentially, if you were to draw a line through the middle of all the homes, it takes the, everything behind that line. So you know, the backs of the roof lines on rearward, the backyards of the homes, it all gets down into that bio retention basin. Now, the bio retention basin has been sized to handle up to and including the one hundred year storm event without any outflow from the basin. There is an overflow pipe, so should that capacity be exceeded? There is a provision that the water can exit the basin if, if that were to occur. But in every single design storm that was evaluated up to, like I said, up to and including the hundred year storm, there is no outflow other than infiltration into the ground from that basin. The same, your question didn't ask this, but I will just mention the same holds true for the underground basin that is right there in front of Home Five. That takes everything from, again, that line through the middle of the homes on down the page. So the, the front yards of the homes, the roadway and the yard area in that, that vicinity. That water flows into that subsurface system, which are comprised of, there's pre-treatment units and the water flows into subsurface chambers, underground chambers. And same thing with that system, that is designed to infiltrate up to and including the hundred year storm without any overflow. So all of the impervious area proposed with this project, all the rooftop area, all the roadways, driveways, everything impervious, plus the yard areas are designed to go to one of those two systems and be a hundred percent mitigated in terms of the, the rate of flow and the volume of flow up to and including the hundred year storm. I, I hope that answers your question.
Matt, on the, on the retention basin at the top, where is the outflow pipe?
Okay, yep. So right where the cursor is there, you can see there's, there's an outflow pipe. It's an eight inch overflow pipe. It, it discharges to a riprap stone apron, we call it. So basically like a five by five pad of, of riprap stone. Just to control any erosion if water were to, to be used in, in, through that pipe. But again, that's designed to not be used in, in any storm event that we evaluate.
Having in mind some of the comments put in by neighbors and interested folks. Why would that outflow pipe, I appreciate the hundred year storm, I understand that. But why, is there any reason that outflow pipe might not be directed to the east or the, the south? As opposed to the direction that it's going?
Very good question. So when we looked at, well, let me back up. The original design for this, this project, which is not what is on the screen right now and what is not before your board. But when we were before the planning board, the original design did not have an overflow pipe. So we, we had the same bio retention basin as you see it here. And our overflow, anything beyond the hundred year storm was designed to just go over an earthen berm reinforced with, with erosion control matting for stability purposes. In the re, in the review process by the, by the town of Concord Engineering Department, they required us to put this overflow pipe in. And so we did that. At that time, when we had to introduce the overflow pipe based on the town's requirement, we looked at what the, what the best, where the best place would be to daylight that pipe. What we found was that the shortest run was the, the, the best way to do it. So to your question, if we were to overflow that pipe to the east, the, the, the challenge with that is that we would have to punch through what is to remain as part of the existing berm that's out there that has vegetation and trees on it. So in order to cut through that berm, it would be much more extensive amount of earthwork and there'd be more tree removal. So our best bet was to take the shortest possible run to physically get that pipe out of that basin, which is what you see here up, up to the north. So it's very minimal disturbance. As I said, it's, it's a five by five riprap apron and the pipe. And when we went out and we walked, as Chris had mentioned, Chris Clausen, we walked the site with the, with the Natural Resources Commission. And we had our surveyor actually flag the limit of work, which includes the, the jut out for that pipe to be installed. And we were able to confirm that where that pipe is proposed does not require any additional trees to be removed to install that pipe. So had we seen that, that went right through a substantial tree, we would have adjusted that pipe, but there was no, there's no reason to. It doesn't go through any substantial trees or require any to be removed. So we think that's the, the best and it makes the most sense in terms of.
Thank you. Another question unrelated. Where are the leach fields for the structures?
Okay, so they are, good question. They are shown on the plan here. So Chris, yeah, you're zooming in. So each of the home sites has a rectangular area that is dashed out.
I see it. Yes, I see.
So those are the areas that are designated as a leach field and the, the, our septic design engineer has been involved with locating those and, and doing the, the soil testing and the deep holes, the perk test, et cetera for those.
Okay. May I assume that the project you're doing in Sudbury has been fully approved by Sudbury?
Yes, sir. It has.
Okay. Let's see. How do you answer the question raised in some of the neighbors' issues? That some of the groundwater modeling material that you used was not current? Now, I'm not suggesting that it wasn't, but they suggest that it's not.
Well, I, I can, I can tell you and Bill Henchy can jump in. The, the groundwater modeling that we did for Mass DEP was extensive. The discharge for the Sudbury wastewater treatment plant goes into a leach field over here. And that's within the Sudbury Zone Two. So the groundwater modeling was really keen on understanding where the water goes, how long it takes to travel to where it goes. And then eventually, after we find out the direction it goes, does it end up at, at the Sudbury well, which is on the south side of Pittsburgh Turnpike and within the town of Sudbury? So that process, I mentioned at the very beginning of my presentation, we involved Alan Catcart from the very beginning, because even though that was work being done in Sudbury, we know that, you know, you have a well fairly close to this location as well. And we wanted to make sure that Mr. Catcart was a part of the process and, and, and he, he was. And that, that modeling was significant, recent and peer reviewed by multiple peers and, and approved by Mass DEP.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Swain, can I, Madam Chair, through you, I should identify myself. I apologize. I'm William Henchy. I'm the attorney for the applicant with offices in Orleans, Massachusetts. Mr. Swain, I think your question was, was the modeling current? It was all done pursuant to a very detailed geohydrological assessment that was performed in two thousand and nineteen and reviewed by Mass DEP in two thousand and twenty. The purpose of the, of the assessment was two things. One, to determine the direction and rate of groundwater flow. And two, to determine the travel times to the significant receptors. And the significant receptors here are obviously the two public water supply wells. The conclusion was the travel time to the Concord well was infinity. That is, the flow never gets to the Concord well. And I can't recall precisely the travel time to Sudbury. I think it was, I, I think it was slightly in excess of three hundred and sixty days. I think it was slightly under a year's time. And as the result of that travel time, there were extraordinary levels of treatment required by Mass DEP in terms of that wastewater treatment plant. So to answer you directly, that groundwater modeling was extensive. It is current. It was done within the, it was reviewed and approved by Mass DEP. I believe in two thousand and twenty, Chris. That's when the groundwater district permit was issued. And I, I don't know what else to say. It was, it was.
That's a problem.
To say it was extensive is, is putting it charitably. That was very.
No, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, I think I've used my time.
Sure. You're, you're asking good questions. So if you have anything else, don't be shy about it. Robbie?
Just so I understand, you know, with the significant grading being done on the site, did, I, I assume that the groundwater modeling took that into account?
Yes, they actually, groundwater is, geez, I'm trying to remember, at least twenty feet below the grades that are there today. So it's, it's, it's deep. All right, I'm trying to think. We never, when we were doing the, the soil perp tests and the witness test, tests, we never got to water.
Okay. And you know, the, the map with the Zone Two for the Concord well on it was helpful, but it was maybe not as detailed enough to be able to see the leach field for the duplex?
I can tell you, we're, we're very conscious of that line and it's not, we're outside of it.
Okay, but it's just outside, it seems.
Like, we can scale that off for you and provide you with.
If it's helpful, Chris, the groundwater elevations in this location were down, the, the high elevations on the western side of the site were one twenty point four. And on the eastern side of the slope, they sloped down to one nineteen. And I think your foundation elevations are at, what, one sixty? To give the board members some sense of those depths.
If I may also add, it's, it is not, it is, there is some, some room there. It's. If I may also add, it's, it is not, it, it is, there is some, some room there. It's, it's not right on the edge of that, that zone two. Uh, there, there is some buffer space there.
Right, okay. Uh, and you know, you, you, i- is that the location for that duplex where you have to go and, and do some work within the hundred foot buffer?
Uh, yes, we're doing some work in that area. And other areas too, the home site next to it, uh, site uh, B. And then on the other side, uh, along the ridge, we're doing a little bit of grading work in, in the buffer zone as well. Uh, the, the, I think the total grading that's being done within the buffer zone. And it's the last, the outer portion of the buffer zone. It's not the, the first, uh, anything within the first twenty-five feet or fifty, fifty feet.
Um. Chris, if I could, if, if I could mention, much of that work too is restoration work of a degraded slope that's within the hundred foot buffer.
Right. Okay. All right, yeah, I just want to understand what you're doing in, in the buffer zone and, and why, so. Um.
I think you'll appreciate it when you do a site visit.
Yeah. Uh, and just sort of a minor question around the sort of impacts to town services. You know, I think we considered fire and that. There was no need for plowing or maintaining the road because it's a private way, but. Um, and maybe this is a question for Elizabeth. Is there any thought around whether, you know, getting a school bus? Or trash truck in there that has to go through Sudbury to get there? Um, is there any material impact from that? To town services?
Uh, as, as far as physically being able to get a school bus there?
Well, obviously you can get a school bus there, but is it, you know, kind of add. An inordinate amount of kind of time and.
I'm not, I'm not sure. Um, the school bus travels um al- almost exactly to the town line to the last. Um, there's, I think, five or six homes now off Fitchburg Turnpike. In that location through the A and R process. So, I mean, the, the, the school bus does travel to, to that town line um currently, so. Um. I, I imagine they may use uh this project to turn around. I don't, I don't know how, how school buses turn around, but no. Um, the school bus currently goes to the town line.
Robbie, it is kind of an interesting question, though, of, of a school bus going into another town to come back. I mean, I, I assume it happens, but.
Yeah.
It's, it is an interesting point. Maybe intellectually, but.
Other question uh had to do with the fire department and the, they weighed in on the design and actually they conditioned our um. Their recommendation that we put in uh sprinklers in all these homes. Uh, so that, and, and we, we did have uh both the Concord and Sudbury Fire Chiefs. Uh, confirm that there is, um, got the word for it, but basically if Concord Fire Department or EMS calls. Sudbury for some help, uh, Sudbury has a fire department uh north, their north Sudbury station is like. A mile uh down the road, so.
Yeah.
The two fire uh chiefs have communicated uh and, and, and that's. That's all good.
Robbie, do you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, um, I, I kind of just trying to get to the meat of this because we're very aware of the issues that surround us from um. What, what we've heard and what we know and what we've read in the twenty plus, I think it's twenty plus letters. Um, Elizabeth, I think it would be very helpful for you to kind of give us a quick synopsis, if you wouldn't mind. I know you're not feeling fantastic, but um. If we could just hit some of the main points, so we have um kind of an educated background of where the town stands on some of these things. And the first thing I would. Point to in the comment we heard the most was obviously the, you know, runoff towards White Pond. Um, and we're hearing Alan was involved with this and I, can you just give us a summary of how you got to where you are now, which is. From what I can tell, from what the planning board said, feeling confident that this is not going to negatively affect White Pond.
Um, I'm, I'm not gonna, I mean, from a synopsis standpoint, you know, with any project. You, town staff goes through and does, you know, their review. Um, and this was. Um, I'm gonna say um reviewed and by the. Public Works Director Alan Cathcart and the Water Sewer Superintendent. Um, and also the Public Health Director and um none of them have, you know, raised an issue or concern. Um, regarding that, um, given Alan's. Involvement with the uh groundwater modeling um and mounting analysis that was done for the Sudbury project. Um, and the six um onsite sewage disposal systems um meet. The, you know, Title V requirements and um. You know, the Public Health Director did not find any issues or concerns. Uh, with those systems, given the distance to the well and the distance to White Pond.
I, I, okay, that's helpful. I think an issue that's gonna be raised is, and I think Robbie, you kind of touched on it when you said. The leach field being kind of right up against the border, which I, it, maybe it's not of, of zone two, is. And it's enough is being done to, to go, you know, to comply with the regulations, but is enough being done in practical sense? Should we be asking for more, I guess, to be done to make sure that we really are protected here? I just raised that question. We don't have to answer it right now, but I think that this, will we meet the requirement thing is. Gonna be an issue for us and a lot of the, of butters of if we meet it by regulation and if. There's anything else that practically we should be asking for. Um, Robbie, I think that's what you were kind of implying with the. Leach field.
Um, so I can, I can. Pose a more direct question to the Public Works Director. Um, if that's helpful.
I think that would be very helpful. I don't know what the other board members think. Um.
Yeah, I think part of that question is.
Yes.
We've been told extensive modeling has been done and town staff has looked at it. You know, does town staff think there, there is any other modeling that hasn't been done that could be helpful or useful? Um, cause that's really, I think, what this board, one of the things this board has the power to try and do is to, is to get a consultant and. Have an independent study here, but if, if town staff says it wouldn't. It wouldn't be showing us any data that we don't already have through the modeling that's been done. I, I think that'd be a good.
Which, for the applicants, but we have asked in the past and they have said, no, we did this with the, the country club, right? They said, we don't need any more studies. We're happy with what's been done. So that might be the case here. I would feel more comfortable if we posed that um. Question, Elizabeth?
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you. Um, in terms of um, oh, let's see what else. You know, the height issue, we talked about a little bit. Um, and I think again, that'll be something useful for us to see when we um. Visit the site. Uh, we are familiar. We've dealt with this in other applications with regrading and. With um elevations being measured differently because of um previous uh excavation. So I, we're familiar with that. I think we all on the board understand that, that concept and it'll be helpful to see on the ground.
Right.
Um. And um, I guess my only other question, um, Elizabeth, natural resources and the buffer zone and the restoration and all of that. I, Delia would tell us if she was unhappy and it doesn't sound like um, there's anything holding it up in, in that area.
Um, the um applicant met with the commission last night. Um, and I did not get an update from um Delia. Um.
I, I.
From last night, so, um, but I can, I will um easily be able to send her an email as well to get an update, but. Um, this, the applicant is going back to the Natural Resources Commission for their November second meeting.
Yes.
Um, so their process, um, it's my understanding will likely be complete. Um, before your meeting in November.
That's very helpful. Um, Robbie and Tom, let me ask you one more time before I open this for public comment. Is there anything else you wanted to add or?
Yeah.
I'm okay.
Yeah, just one last kind of point of clarity on the height issue. You know, is, is the applicant's. Kind of position that. We needed to bring the grade up because. Having the grade lower would be a hardship or. Um, you know, impracticable for the development, or is it that? You know, regardless of where you put the grade, there's pits somewhere where the low point is just. Irrel, you know, not in spatial relation to the. What we're talking, you know, it just makes the.
Matt, I, I think it's a, you'll, it's be really evident when you're, when you do your site visit it, but um. Um, Matt, I mean, you wanna touch on that?
Yeah, I, I think, I think the site visit will tell the story very well. Um, so I look forward to that, but I think what you'll find is evident during the site visit is. Uh, it's just impracticable to work with. It's, it's just artificially very low, the grade. Relative to the surround, all the surroundings. So to tie the roadways in with reasonable slopes, to create reasonable. Grading and yards around the proposed homes, it, it ju, and to just to level out the very erratic grading that exists in this. This former excavation pit. Um, just requires some degree of filling to, to, to have it make sense and harmonize with the surroundings. So that, that is why we're doing. We're not, we're not filling it more than is needed just to really get the project to, to work.
Thank you.
That's very, very helpful. And then I guess my last point, cause I think it's important is. The benefit to the town, that why you're doing the PRD versus going in for whatever you can do by right and what benefit that you think it's giving us. Beyond just a traditional subdivision or.
Well, that's.
Some comment on that.
Okay, Bill, but you wanna touch, touch on that one?
Yeah, sure, sure. And, and that's a very good question. I think it's, it's relevant to your standard of review and um. Um, I was gonna say something about this in the beginning, but uh, Chris asked me to wave off, so I, I appreciate the question. That we started um with an A and R plan that would have given us the ability to file a definitive uh by right up there. Um, we presented that plan on a conceptual basis to the planning board during this process, and I can tell you that it. It would have resulted in a number of very large estate size lots. Um, but um, a number of things that are present in the current plan uh would not have happened. Uh, there would not be. Fifty-seven percent of the, of the site devoted to open space. There would not have been a conservation restriction. Over a very substantial portion of wetlands which are within the zone one of the Concord White Pond wells. Um, there would not be the diversity of housing types. Um, and we, we concede that it's difficult with six units to create a large diversity of housing types, but nevertheless. We've got what the bylaw requires in here. We've got a duplex. Uh, the duplex was further modified during the planning board process to drop a bedroom. Um, and we have a variety of housing sizes. The planning board. Discussed this um in some detail the other night on their recommendation letter. And um, I, I think the consensus there was, I don't wanna speak for them. They have a letter and, and certainly Elizabeth can amplify this, but. I think the board felt that although this wasn't sort of what they typically see in a PRD. Um, this one did achieve a reasonable amount of diversity, given the number of units and did achieve. Um, at least a couple of three units that were substantially smaller than otherwise might have been built. And the board made a finding that the um, that the proposal um comports with the town's um. Planning documents in, in terms of providing those benefits. So uh, I, I don't think it's insignificant. In addition to that. And I think the site visit will be very helpful for you to see this. The amount of revegetation, replanting, tree planting. Um, notwithstanding the loss of those thirty-four trees on that uh over to the western side of the site, all of which will be replaced. Um, there's just a, an astounding amount of replanting and revegetating and restoration of this site, which is a current is just a. An open bare sand gravel pit, uh, which will provide additional, you know, habitat and trees and. Um, the carbon reduction that goes with all of those trees as they grow. Um, all of those, we would suggest are, are benefits to the town. So that would be my answer to your question, and I usually talk too long, but if I might. If you bear with me on, on one other comment, I, I think really, we really would welcome the input uh on the White Pond question. I, I, I can. Answer this very simply i- in, in, in this way. White Pond is at a higher groundwater elevation than this site. And since water flows downhill, all of the groundwater flow is away from White Pond. So it's, it's simply not physically possible. For these six septic systems to affect White Pond because the groundwater flow is away from that direction, but. Don't take it from me. I, I would welcome the opportunity for your town staff to comment on that and um, of course, we can discuss that further.
Right, thank you.
Can I just drill down on one point that um, as you raised, which is. You know, the, the benefit of the open space and the conservation restriction. Just from looking at, you know, that aerial shot. And, and knowing the topography. I would say a lot of the land that's gonna be under the conservation restriction isn't really buildable anyway. Uh, cause it's, it's close enough to the wetlands. The slope is too steep. Um, how, how much of the open space is really buildable land that we're talking about here?
I think uh, we can, we uh, Matt, you did some numbers on how much was upland versus how much was wetland, and I don't know if you have those uh available?
Yeah, so um. Yeah, so the, I mean, I, I hear the question, you know, and, and. It's relative to, you know, the, the slopes and the topography as well as the wetlands. In terms of the, I can't answer the slope and topography part, but I understand what you're saying. Um, but as far as the wetlands uh is concerned, so the um. When we look at the limit of work associated with this project, so the limit of, of area of this site that will be disturbed. For what is proposed. Um, only eight percent of that limited work is actually within the hundred foot buffer zone to wetlands, so. Um, a, a very small fraction of this project is even jurisdictional to the Natural Resources uh Commission. On this project, so um, there is quite a bit of upland area that will be uh included. It, you know, in that conservation restriction area. Some of that is steeper grades, some of it's not. Um, you know, those steeper grades can be buildable. It's not necessarily that they're not buildable. Uh, you, you know, that, they can be built upon. So um, a lot of the upland area um. Uh, you know, within that hundred foot buffer zone is actually proposed to be undisturbed and, and much of it in the um, in the restriction.
Restriction.
There is a plan where it shows the restriction, yeah, okay.
It's a good point, though, Robbie, when you talk about what the benefit is to us versus the traditional subdivision. So um, I appreciate the question and. Probably seeing what, you know, would be buildable, would be useful for us.
Yeah.
Um. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open to public comment. Um. I, I hope everyone has been listening because we have been trying to touch on the points and as I mentioned, um. You know, if you could try to respect everyone's time and, and not be too repetitive, clearly, we're gonna go over all of this. Um, in more detail and go to the site visit and discuss it more. Uh, that being said, when you speak, when you get called on, please say your whole name and um, your address. Uh, I will go ahead and call on Jim. I don't know your last name, but. Up and you're muted and, and also unmute yourself.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, sorry.
Jim Merker, I live at sixty-eight Shore Drive for uh the last forty-seven years, which abuts the pond. And I enjoy walking the town trails and in the conservation and reservation areas. Um, so I have uh, one, my main concern is lighting, and I haven't heard anything about that in any of the. Discussions or presentations and that uh, one of the things we enjoy in this area, we actually have a night sky. Where we can uh, you know, get a pretty good look at the stars and so forth, and that, I realize that's a luxury more and more places don't enjoy. So could you um, tell us what you plan to do with exterior lighting to minimize the flow of the light on shining on other parcels? Or up in the air, for example?
Um. I'm actually, I'm gonna allow that and Elizabeth, since you're still here, if you have any other comments on it, but um, go ahead and whoever wants to ask.
I, I, I can answer that question.
Yep.
If, if, if that's, uh, if you.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so we have no streetlights on uh, on the roadway that we'll be building, um, which is called Rookery Lane. And all of the uh single family homes and the duplex homes, the lighting will be dark sky compliant. Um, we've submitted actual cut sheets of, of the, of the light fixtures to the uh planning uh board. And that has been reviewed uh by staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But is there a condition in there? But is there a condition in there?
Wow. Um, I'm not sure, but I'm writing it down. If, if the planning, if, if it did not get included in the planning board recommendation, um. Uh, it, it should be, but um, it is a, a requirement.
Perfect.
And the cut sheets were submitted um, and are dark sky compliant.
Great. Um, all right, next question.
Would that be me?
Oh, I don't see your hand raised, but I don't see anyone else's hand raised, so go ahead.
Uh, Jeffrey Parker, three, one, five Plainfield Road. Okay, I was going to make some comments, and I wasn't going to comment about the groundwater, but. Full disclosure, groundwater scientists, I've worked internationally around the world, as groundwater scientist is my graduate work. At Stanford, I'm a research scientist at MIT. Wasn't going to comment on that, but when they said that. Um, look, there's a zone of depression from the conquered well, it will pull. The water from these leach fields will flow towards that well. Here, and that's because there's a huge stone depression from, and that's all I'm going to say about that. Another question I have is, you said the soils have been tested. For infiltration, this is to the civil engineer, but if you're going to have eight to fifteen feet of fill on top of this, how can you say the soils have been tested?
I'll let someone go ahead and answer that as well.
Um, Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, the perk tests were done. At the locations of the proposed septic fields, any material uh, that would go on top of that uh, would need to be title five. Uh, compliant, so uh, uh, if I'm saying that right now.
Yes, if I may, so the design has been um. The project has been designed such that the, so yes, the soil testing has been witnessed by. The, the town of Concord Engineering Department.
Yeah, but, but they're witnessing soil that's not going to be on top.
Yeah, if you could, let, let's let him talk, and then I'll get back to you. You guys can watch, drive, just talk through me.
And the design is such that the um, it, it's a good, it's actually, it's a good question. Um, so you don't want to design an infiltration system such that. There's a layer of, of fill that has a lower infiltration capacity. Between the underlying soils and the bottom of your infiltration system, so we've designed it such that. Um, that is not the case, so that the infiltration systems, the bioretention basin and the. Uh, subsurface infiltration system will have a direct connection with that underlying. Soil, which was, is what was uh, found in the, the um, test pits that were witnessed by the town.
Mr. Parker, I also think that this goes to what we were saying about kind of talking to the town staff and seeing if there's other independent, you know, anything else we need to, to look at. But go ahead, did you have another question? Oh, you're on mute.
I don't know how I got muted, sorry about that.
Right.
Um, so my main point is. Uh, my alternative view, this, these homes will be very visible, especially one, two, and three will be very visible. Through the wetlands and especially the rookery. I mean, right now, I can stand on the rookery, rookery overlook and see this ridge. And that's before they remove those thirty-four trees, so I'm asking you, when you go on your site visit. Go to the north ridge and see what you can see, and imagine. All the trees are being taken up, every single tree on top of the north ridge, ridge is flagged. And you'll know you're on the north ridge, check the flag numbers, it's one through thirty-four, and if I can share my screen, I can show you some pictures.
You know what, let's, let's hold off, like, as we're going to meet again, so.
Okay.
You don't get, I think the point is well understood, and Tom, you mentioned.
Just one other point, the reason they want to raise these homes up is for a view, and that view is of the wetlands. Thank you for, and the trails, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Might I, might I respond really briefly on, on the question of the, the, the cone of depression around a municipal well? Having represented most of the water districts on the upper Cape for thirty years and having. Gone through the permitting process for multiple public water supply wells. The entire point of delineating a zone two. In a public water supply well is to define the zone of contribution for that well. Under full sustained pumping conditions, so that, that boundary is, is highly probative on that question. If you're in the zone two. You are contributing to that well. If you're outside of the zone two, you are not, it's really that's.
I'd, I appreciate it. I'd rather not get back into the back and forth on this right now, but I, but the point again is taken and. This is obviously something we're going to dig into a little bit deeper, no pun intended. Um. Mister Nick, Nick Johnson.
Sorry, video, there we go, okay. Um, I'm Nick Johnson, thirty-eight Bolton Street. Uh, and for the sake of time, I just want to respond to a couple of things that were mentioned by the applicant, if that's okay?
Sure.
Um, one of which is they're claiming that there is a one-to-one. Uh, replacement for the thirty-four trees, uh, that is false if you consider age. Um, age of trees, um, as you guys will get into, and I don't want to waste your time. Um, you know, root systems, water absorption, ecosystem, all the things that they were touting in their revegetation euphemisms here. Uh, my second comment is that. They are claiming as much transparency as you. Uh, deserve and the planning board deserves and the NRCs deserves. However, the very people that are uh, communicating to you as representatives of the public. Um, are not being allowed themselves to see what you are seeing, and I think that should be pointed out. We have not been allowed to be present uh, at the site visits. Which historically has been the right of the public, and their response has been safety concerns for. Uh, the public visiting the site. So I just wanted to point that out as far as transparency and the betterment of uh, Concord. Um, you know, there's, this is not carbon reduction, okay?
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, I have.
Elizabeth, can I?
To the site visit issue?
Can I just clarify?
Um.
Uh, it, it is, it is not a conquered policy that the public is allowed at site visits for the board, whether it's the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board. Um, it's private property, and um, for whatever reason. Um, under state statute, the boards have the right to conduct a site visit, but under state statute. The property owner um, is not obligated to let the public onto private property for whatever. Um, reasons, and for this reason, it's an active construction site, um, and, you know. The applicant has, you know, does not want to have the public on that site visit. So I just want to clarify that, it, it, it's not, it's not up to the town of Concord, um, it's pursuant to state statute. That gives the board the right to have a site visit, but not um, to have it be open to the public.
Yes, that's correct. I was not, just to clarify, I was not accusing the town of Concord for misconducting themselves. I was just pointing out. The uh, applicant did not allow, did requested that the public not be allowed, which is all I said. It's just to clarify.
Wouldn't be the first time, but.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Um, all right, Frederick, I don't know how to say your last name.
Okay, Begon, Frederick, thirty-one Fern Street.
Hi.
My comment, thanks for um, managing this all very thoughtfully. There's a, there's a lot of emotion here.
Yes.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments um. That I think for, from my vantage point, part of the issue is that. The transparency is very much uh, needed, particularly given all the emotion. But unfortunately, there are, uh, there seem to be a number of pieces of information being shared that are conflicting. And so I think over time, the trust has been eroded, making statements like uh, we're. Providing habitat where there is none currently, that's a false statement. I spent. Years walking those sand pits, particularly during COVID. Um, and partly to go see the beautiful wildlife that is now running through my backyard, because they've been driven out, so. It doesn't um, build that confidence. Uh, when statements like that are being made. The other comment I just want to make is that if you walk down Bolton Street onto Fern. You can already see lighting, and you can already see activity from, I'm not exactly sure what it is that I'm looking at, but the buildings that have been built. So to say that we're not going to see these homes at all is just simply false. Particularly when they're being elevated, those homes, I think, are actually a little bit lower than the grade of uh, Fern Street is. And so when I hear that this, uh, these six houses are going to be on the same grade. I cannot imagine how on earth that's going to be accomplished. Uh, while still protecting the views, it's extremely difficult to imagine and. Going back to the trust and the confidence, um, it just, I think it, it feels rather threatening. We used to look out and just see either beautiful nature or dark skies, um, and that is already no longer true. And then the last point I'll just make quickly is that we have spent. Two years listening to backing up noises and blasting noises, literally shaking our homes. The sound alone from this development has been really, really intrusive, and I. Fully appreciate the right to buy a piece of property and to develop it. Um, I enjoy a home in Concord with the same benefits, so I, I'm not looking to infringe upon anybody's rights, but I do want to just point out that. We are so tired in this neighborhood of all of that, and if there are ways to mitigate, if you're going to develop. Are there ways to mitigate the impact, the sound, the timing? I think that there was work happening seven days a week, if I'm not mistaken, we just weren't getting, giving a, a break. So managing the decibels is another concern that I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Um, Suzanne Langridge?
Hi, Suzanne Langridge, seventy-seven Bolton Street. Thank you so much for taking my question, and like Freddie said, uh. Managing this uh, thoughtfully. I just wanted to go back to a, a point that. Tom on the board made about or asked about with the trees that are being removed, the thirty-four trees on the ridge. And the question was whether removing, whether there's a, a view that they would see of the houses. And that the trees are being replaced one-to-one, and the differences between a twenty-four inch. Uh, diameter tree that's up there now, so those trees are all quite large. And then the one-to-one replacement will be, I don't know how large, something like six DBH, quite small, I imagine. Um, certainly not at that size and height, and so the question was. Will there be a view? And I'm, would like to ask that question again in terms of. If you're removing all those trees and replacing them with tiny trees. Maybe after fifty to a hundred years, you're going to have a similar kind of tree and all the benefits that they provide. But have, what is the situation within those sort of fifty years? And I, and I put this in the context of the sort of Concord um. View, uh, the, the sort of requirements for these types of projects. Where the benefit and the view and how that might be impacted is part of what they're asking for, so I really want to make that clear.
Thank you. Um, I, I appreciate that, and I think, I mean, that's certainly in my mind, when we go on this site visit, that. These are not going to be exactly the same trees the minute they're put in, so um, I think that's something that we will discuss. I'd rather not get into a back and forth, as I was saying right now, but um. I, I appreciate all those comments. Um, are there, I, I don't see anyone else's hands, are there, are there any other hands? Um, I, I appreciate everyone's comments, because I really think that everyone has touched on the things that are important for all sides here. Uh, I mean, I am a resident of Concord, it's my goal to look out for Concord, also with, you know, balancing private property rights, which we also very much understand. Um, I understand the disappointment of what's gone on on the other side of um, the Sudbury border, um. And I understand that that can't really inform, can't necessarily inform what we're doing here with this, this separate parcel, so. I would say to all of you that I hope you trust us, uh, as your representatives, when we go on the site visit, I know that you're disappointed that you can't be there, but um. I understand personally would also not want people in an active construction zone. Um, so uh. I, I think what we have some work to do, balancing everyone's, everyone's interest here, and I appreciate everyone's kind of respect, you know, that we're all being respectful and that um. I, we'll, we'll come to an agreement that kind of satisfies, I think, people. So, um, that being said, uh, any, uh, so I'm closing public comment for now, but not. Closing, continuing, Elizabeth, whatever you don't want me to say, I'm not saying.
No, you, uh, you can close public comment for tonight, um, you do not want to, you do not want to close.
I'm not closing here.
Um, you're going to continue, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, no, I just wanted to ask Robbie and Tom if you had anything else uh, to say. Um.
Well, I have no, I, I have no further comment. Yeah, I have no more comments tonight.
All right, Tom, feel free to disagree with any of my statements too, but just, just trying to put it in, in kind of context as we move forward. Robbie?
Yeah, you know, I, I had another question um, about the hers rating and, you know, how we might interpret that if Elizabeth has any insight on. Is fifty-five good? Or that just?
I have, I have no clue, and I would, I would turn that over to our building commissioner, Paul Creedon. Um, I don't believe we have a sustainability director yet. Um, but Paul may be able to answer that question.
Yeah, fif- fifty-five is a current energy code requirement, that, that's likely to change next year. But I'm not sure when, so fifty-five is, 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 is the number I've come up with.
Okay.
It's, it, it, some, some, some homes come in lower than that. I think I've seen them as low as thirty-five. Uh, but most of them are, I would say, the majority of homes in Concord right now are between fifty and fifty-five.
Great, okay, thanks. Yeah, that, that, that was the other kind of data that I wanted to make sure we had.
Again, Robbie, I think it's a good question, because we're talking about what has to be done and what can be done, that goes above and beyond, um. And this is a particularly sensitive site, obviously, for, for Concord, so um. That's all I have for tonight. If we could schedule a site visit, that would be fantastic. Um, do we want to do that offline, Elizabeth?
Um, yeah, so Haley will send out, um, you know, like a doodle poll or, you know. Um, trying to, you know, get a date where you all can um, come together and then um, you know, post the site visit. Um, I did want to just address one, um, one comment, while um. There's nothing we can do about what happens in the town of Sudbury, sadly. Um, the town of Concord does have a construction noise bylaw, which does limit the hours of construction. Um, and uh, it, it is not permitted to happen seven days a week, um, and holidays and. And so just wanted to put that out there. So Haley will send out um, and a poll and find a date that works for everybody. Um, and then as far as continuing this public hearing, Haley, I don't know if there's anything already scheduled for November?
Yes, we have two, um. We don't have anything specifically scheduled, but there are two new projects.
Okay, so this can be continued to your November meeting at seven PM?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
And, and Elizabeth, did, did we establish, I think we all know what we think the answer is going to be, but um, uh, Mr. Parker's question. Have we confirmed with the applicant that the public is not going to be invited to this site visit?
It's our preference that it would be the board.
Okay, thank you.
We, uh, a few years ago, we had uh, public on a, one of these site visits and a man got hurt, and we're highly sensitive, sensitive to that.
Thank you.
Um, all right, thank you all, appreciate your time, I appreciate you um, trying to move quickly and yet thoroughly through all of this, so we will see you um, at.
No, you, you, somebody does need to move.
Continue it.
To continue the public hearing to November tenth at seven PM.
So Elizabeth doesn't have a heart attack, and she's.
Yeah.
Very, very correct. Um, I need that motion, so let's do that.
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Fayya?
All right.
Mr. Swaim?
Yes.
Miss Akers Moore, aye. All right, thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you for your time. Bye-bye.
So, and we are going to move on to our next hearing, and Elizabeth, thank you so much.
I am leaving.
Yes, I hope you feel better soon, and thank you again.
Yes, thank you. Um, good night, everyone.
Good night. Uh, moving on to seven fifteen New Life Community Church, do we have Theo back?
Do we still have, do we have to continue uh, the seven ten?
Oh, I'm sorry, we do, seven ten, I just.
I, I move to continue the, oh, well, Theo's back, so I'll still move. I'll move to continue the application of Michael Gucci. Uh, for a special permit under section seven one, three, seven one, five, eleven, six, and eleven, seven, zoning by law to expect twelve. Hundred and seventeen square foot, two by garage, a second story addition at three on Garfield Road to our November meeting at.
Seven oh five?
Five.
Seven oh five.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Fayya?
All right.
Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Miss Akers Moore, aye. Yay, all right, seven fifteen New Life Community Church.
Aye.
Hello, how are you? Um, so I'm all caught up, I have, I have watched the whole last hearing, um, so what is the update?
Well, I met with Joe Cormier, the uh, Concord Town Engineer, one of them, and he made a site visit and pointed out where we could place our sign. It turned out, uh, he had a. It turned out, uh, he had a, he found the signed stamp document and life does own a substantial part of the island, so um we can actually measure from the building where we can put the sign. So the location is not the issue I thought it first was. Uh, the other good news is recently a lot of brush was cut. So when we moved the sign over, uh, it still can be seen as long as a si- as long as a sign is still at the requested size. Uh, the other thing I'm working with the town is to move the, this is not a through a through street sign from behind a big limb of a tree to move it from the north side of the tree to the south side. So people driving north will not continue driving to New Life Community Church. Um, there's a safety concern there. So what I'm trying to do with a sign is for people who are trying to find us will find us and the people who shouldn't be uh, driving around the the island because they've gone too far will will see the, this is not a through street sign and turn left to go to Route Two instead of driving onto our property. So it's.
Sounds like you've gotten a lot done.
Yeah, I I think so. I've heard a lot.
Um, and here and we from listening last time, so there there are two things being requested here. The second freestanding sign and the this sign's um size, correct? Theo is the last. Theo, you're going to be extremely disappointed that I look at these sign variances differently from the um variances in in zoning bylaws. So I know you said I would be, I would, the word variance, I know gets me, but um, well, I, we can take comments in a second, but in in my mind, um, what Jim said about this being a safety issue, um, I think is is compelling. I think that um, this the word and the variances and specific cases saying that the Board of Appeals to turn if the board determines that the circumstances involved with a particular sign were not contemplated by the bylaw that we can grant a variance. I think this would be a a situation that was not contemplated by the bylaw that does not take away from the um purpose and intent of the bylaw, which is, you know, limitations of size and location. So um, that's where I stand to catch you all up. And are there other comments from the board?
I agree, and I think the particular circumstances here, you know, that the the other sign is basically on Route Two. And it's not like they have two signs running on the same road, meaning that I'm not just concerned about there being a second sign. Um, I think Mr. Meister has given us a great sort of uh reason why the size is important too. Um, so I'm I'm in favor.
Any other comments from the board? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open up to public comment. Anyone in the public like to speak on this? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. Um, I think so where it's located, was that on, is that the plan that you sent or is that still need to be located with a?
Well, I I did, I did put an updated PDF after I met with with uh Joe.
That was after, no, Joe, okay.
Yeah, and so Joe, I think I I think I may have sent it to Joe and Haley, but I'm not sure. Um, I I can send that.
Well, there was something on the on the yeah, on on our website that I just want to make sure that because of the date was kind of confusing to me, but it was.
It was nine nine twenty-seven.
Was it twenty-seven or something?
Yeah, and everything is uh is located uh.
On your property, I saw.
On the property, in property line isn't in the in the proper location, one would assume. Um, so yeah, I mean, I I I think, you know, that was my my biggest hurdle last time. It's like, you can't put a sign on somebody else's property, right?
Totally agree.
And so that that was, that was a clear one. And then indeed, you know, you all are the are the attorneys, the lawyers, so uh, we, you know, I I learn a lot.
The sentiment that that I wouldn't be happy with a variance, but this one I'm all right with. Um, all right, so can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve uh sign variance for New Life Community Church on the section eight B three of the sign bylaw for an additional freestanding sign that exceeds the twenty-five square foot limit at two-two-one Baker Avenue, parcel three-eight-zero-six.
A second, and I also.
Yeah, and I assume there's no conditions or anything, right?
What, what was your question, Robbie?
I was gonna also note that's basically Sherlock Holmes's address, so bonus, bonus points.
I'm glad somebody pointed that out because I thought the same thing when it came in.
Oh, man. All right. See, this is why we keep you around, Robbie. That was good.
Right.
Okay, uh, yes, standard conditions, I would assume on this. Um, Paul, if you have anything else besides standard conditions? Paul's silent, so let's say that that's true. All right.
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, no, I'm fine with that.
You were blown away by that reference, that literary reference, weren't you?
Well, I think it's two-twenty-one B Baker Street.
Yeah, but close enough.
Um, okay, uh, so all in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Mr. Faya?
Aye.
Ms. Akers Moore, aye. Thank you very much, um, and good luck with the sign.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
No problem. Have a good night. Okay, I'm not going to skip it this time, Robbie. Um, seven-twenty Concord Academy, can I get a motion to continue this?
All right, I move to continue the application of Concord Academy for a special permit uh with site plan review under section six-two-eleven, seven-two-seven, seven-two-eight, seven-seven-two-twelve, eleven-six, eleven-eight-seven, constructed and Centennial Art Center. Um, and some other things. One-six-six Main Street to our November meeting at seven seven-ten P M.
Great. Okay, great. Mr. Faya?
Right.
Mr. Kindermans?
All right.
Ms. Akers Moore, aye. All right, can I get another motion for the Concord Public School? Wow, November is going to be quite the meeting.
Well, that's 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 all we thought in September as well.
Yeah. All right, well, let's see what happens. Um, can I get a motion?
Sure, I will move to continue the application of the Concord Public Schools for a special permit under various sections of the bylaw for various things at eight-thirty-five Old Marlboro Road to our November meeting at seven-fifteen P M.
I mean, our our law professors would be really proud of us, Robbie. All right, all right, can I get a second? All right, Mr. Faya?
Uh, hi.
Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Ms. Akers Moore, aye. All right, here we go, seven-thirty.
All right, I I have to, I just, I have to disclose I am in a butter uh to this property, so uh, you know, I don't know if that means I have to accuse myself, but maybe Tom wants to vote on this.
You want to fill in on this one?
Whatever suits the suits the moment.
Sure. All right. Um, all right, go go ahead with your presentation.
Hi. Virginia Lee, and my husband James Nugent and I live at one-sixty-two Plainfield Road. Um, we purchased the mid-century modern house um in nineteen eighty-eight. Our daughter was born in nineteen ninety-one. Uh, she went to all the public schools in Concord and graduated from C.C. in two thousand and nine. So this house is pretty much our forever house and we're, you know, at this point kind of seniors. And we'd like to uh make sure that it's a safe house and that it's safe for people to live here and it's safe for our neighbors to be able to know that um if any kids or anything came onto the property, it would be good. Um, for the last several years, our retaining walls have been collapsing. Um, we have two sets of retaining walls. The one that we're talking about tonight um is on the Plainfield roadside of the property. We have a corner property that is on the edge of Dover and Plainfield. So actually, the project that we were discussing earlier affects us too, but that's not why we're here tonight. Um, at any rate, um, since both sides of our house had retaining walls that were collapsing, um, we had been wanting to do something about it. Um, COVID hit and we got slowed down. Um, and then during the winter of twenty-twenty-one, it was so bad that we put um some two-by-threes up to hold the structure up so it wouldn't collapse. Um, and fortunately, in twenty-twenty-two, I was able to um hire Mike Kennedy from Kennedy uh in Acton to to build the retaining walls. That was um after I had hired an engineer to make sure that they were whatever we were doing would be structurally sound and it would last for like a really long time. Uh, so we put in this fat face paving by ideal with Geo Grids pulling out from the the uh um the cement blocks that are interlocking. Um, and it's quite the, it was quite the big deal. We had a whole lot of machines on our property, which is a small piece of property for a long time. And that was finally completed and then we finally had walls that were not going to fall down on anybody. Okay, so then I went to the next step of I need to, we need to have the the roof put back up that came down when Mike came over and put the retaining walls in and to have a railing structure around it, just like it was before. Um, so um, we had hired um Marco Severino as our um from Flow Design as our architect. And he worked along with the engineer. I didn't ask the engineer to come tonight. Um, I think Marcos can cover all the details of his design. Uh, at any rate, we asked Marcos to come up with something that would be, you know, would cover the stairs. It's just a roof to cover the stairs. And he came up with a a plan, which we then, once I found a a contractor, because that wasn't an easy feat, um, uh, then I put in to for a permit for the roof and for the railings. And um we were surprised that it, we needed to get a special permit, but I guess that's the rule. Um, because it was pretty much the same as, if not smaller, than what was originally there since apparently the fifties. So we're just hoping we can get the roof um, a roof built and it would be nice to move on that as soon as possible. Um, so I'm just going to turn it over to Marcos to explain his design.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Virginia. Marcos Severino from Flow Design Architects, uh, located in Salem, Massachusetts. Um, back when we met um Virginia and Jim back in June of twenty-twenty-one. Um, we were kind of concerned of her current situation with the with the stairs. Um, Madame Chair, am I able to to share the?
Um, Haley, can we make that happen? Can I make that happen?
Um, yeah, you should be able to share.
So can everybody see the screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, so so when when we first uh met uh Jim and and Virginia, Ms. Virginia, um, based on the pictures, the the conditions that we that you guys can see here, um, you know, it was collapsing. Um, there's, there was a system roof at that point covering portion of the of the stairs. Um, and those are all the pictures indicating that. Um, those are some pictures taken uh from Ms. Virginia. Those are all the ones there. This is the progress. As you can tell, um, basically the the roof that was there was removed, uh, which was not in compliance with the setback at the time. So um those are uh the stairs that were already built based on our our design. So our main goal is to basically, I'm going to just show the site plan to indicate how close of the property we are. So our design is to basically just use the same footprint. Um, it's actually smaller than um what it used to be by a couple inches. Um, and we're just trying to basically um get into the safe aspect of of this by providing a a cover for the stair. So in case that there is snow, um, Ms. Virginia and her husband will be able to access uh the basement uh level for um, you know, safely. Um, so basically that that's why we are here in front of the board. Um, so I'm just open to questions.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions from the board?
No, uh, I don't, I don't have any questions, obviously.
I had looked at this. Yeah, I'm sorry. I had looked at this. It seems to me to be an improvement, though slight, but given what they've done, uh, it's smaller. It clearly is needed over those stairs uh and the reconstruction, so I think it's an improvement.
Uh, I I I wholeheartedly agree with that, Tom.
I.
I was looking, I was looking at the screen here as well, while the uh Ms. Lee was talking and and and, yeah. Uh, I think it's it's an improvement and, you know, it's it's a, it's a safety concern, so.
And given what was there before, I just think it would be hard argument to not approve this, so I I am all for it.
Just to be clear, it's not smaller. It's the reason why he's here for a special permit. It's 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 increasing in length.
In length? Yeah, can we put that up again? I mean.
Yeah.
It's increasing in length, but it's it's the, uh, I I would assume that there it's it's because it's in this side setback here, right? And and right, but it's.
Increasing the nonconformity in that part that it gets longer.
Exactly, yeah.
But I still would argue that it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I appreciate that, Paul. Sorry. We're being careless with our words a little bit. It's narrower, but it's longer. Um, so uh, let me open the public comment and see if there is any. Um, is there any public comment? I don't think anyone's here besides us, so.
No, there is, there is people here still.
Are there? Okay, uh, well, I don't see anyone so raising their hand, so I'm going to close public comment. And uh unless there's other comment, I from the board, I am ready for motion.
I will make a motion to uh approve the special permit for Virginia Lee under sections seven-one-three and eleven-six to replace replace and extend the roof over the existing exterior stairwell at one-six-two Plainwell, Plainfield Road, parcel three-two-seven-three. With your standard conditions.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Mr. Swaim?
Aye.
Ms. Akers Moore, aye. Thank you very much to both of you and um good luck with the repair.
Thank you so much, members of the board.
Thank you. With that, I think all all we have left is are the minutes to approve from September eighth for their comments?
Um, I I I submitted that there were no comments on my end.
Okay.
So.
Um, great, then can I get a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes for uh from the uh, what's it, September.
Great, Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Mr. Faya?
Right.
Ms. Akers Moore, aye.
Done.
Nicely done, everyone.
Yeah, done, done. You you guys, you guys, I thought that did very well. Um, you know, listening and um I, you know, yeah, it it it, this is, this, this is, I I think this is a very good.
Are you saying you want to tear the November ninth meeting? Is that what I'm hearing? Or the November ten?
Well, there is at least one item on that 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 November tenth.
And you have to recuse yourself.
That I have to recuse myself, so uh, you know.
Hey, if you hire me to do some work for you, then I'll have to recuse myself too on that. We can leave the rest of them at it. You you hire me to do some consulting work on your consulting job. I like that. And then good luck to the rest of you. Um, no, thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Um, Paul, Haley, everyone, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll see you guys. At the next one.
Yeah, take care.
Bye.
Bye-bye.